You snuck in.
Yeah, I came from work, so I'm a little rushed right now, but I'll be good.
Okay.
We're all prepared.
Deep breath.
We're ready.
You always speak better than me, so you're good.
All right, it's six o'clock. We just want to call to order the school board meeting of District 882. If we can rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge of leave just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then if we can just note the absence of Chairman Hagley and Board Member Jamie. Seeking approval for the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody is here, so that we have here for tonight. Motion made by Melissa, second by Jennifer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And moving on, I was just going to read a recap. We had a work session on January 24th. We have just a recap of that meeting. I was just going to present it for the minutes. Good evening, I just wanted to start tonight's meeting by providing a quick recap of the January 24th School Board work session. Following the January 24th Monticello School Board meeting, the Monticello School Board had an open work session for the purpose of budget planning discussion. At this work session, the board discussed two financial scenarios as previously presented by the school district business office. In order to get our general fund balance back within policy parameters, we had the option of reducing our budget by $3.1 million this spring or to spread the reductions out over two years, starting with approximately $2.1 million this year and approximately another $1.4 million next year. The board discussed both of these options on January 24th before advising the school district to move forward with a plan to spread the reductions out over two years, beginning with approximately $2.1 million in reductions this spring. The board's reasoning is that education funding is in a somewhat unpredictable position right now, especially given the budget surplus at the state of Minnesota. While we need to plan to live within our means and control our budget without outside help, we are also hopeful that there is an increase, that there is an increase in education funding still to come, which could lead to less reductions being needed. As a board, we want to keep as many of our talented educators and leaders in this district and community for as long as possible. It's our hope that by delaying the second round of cuts, we are able to find additional funding either through a change in state aid or the continued pursuit of grants. We will also, or we will be able to retain more of our excellent educators while also maintaining fiscal responsibility. Excuse me. Moving down, we don't have any citizen comments tonight, but we do have our wonderful student representatives, Emily Sukhina Al-Mohammed and Emily Emrick.
Natalie Emrick.
Sorry. Okay.
Hello, I hope you are all well this evening. Again, I'm Emily Sukhina and this is...
Natalie Emrick, hi.
And we have a couple of things to touch on today, but that is because this past weeks have been eventful and these coming weeks will be eventful as well. So first I want to touch on eighth grade registration. They have finally finished and Natalie will speak more upon that a bit later. For our high school registration for classes have finished, so now the counselors are prepared to start putting students into the classes they need for next year. Juniors are obviously very excited to hear, you know, what classes they're going to have in their senior year. Second semester is moving along smoothly as all of us, as students have finally kind of adjusted for new classes or kind of gotten back into the flow of things after these holiday break has been over. I want to go into further detail on ACT testing since that is coming up. So our school offers this kind of event called Saturday Math Prep and that is something for students to go, not all Saturdays, but some Saturdays if they want to do their math homework. It's something that math teachers often offer extra credit for. And during these math preps, our school also offers sort of practice for the math part of the ACT exams, which a lot of juniors and seniors, excuse me, take advantage of and they find very helpful for practicing that part of the exam. Not only does our school offer that sort of math prep during Saturday Math Prep, but they also offer ACT prep classes. These will be held March 21st, 23rd, 28th, and the 30th. And if you really want to register, you can look on our school website. If you're on the fence on whether or not you want to register for these classes, I took them last year because I really wanted to see what the ACT test would have been, what it would have been about because I hadn't heard of anything the test would be like. And I genuinely found these prep classes very helpful. It really put my mind into how the test was going to be, what type of mentality I should have had. They had even practice problems that were going to be on the test. I found it very, very helpful. The ACT test will be held for our school on Tuesday, April 5th and the deadline to register is February 11th at 3:00 PM. You can register on the school website as well. I do recommend, you know, registering if you're a junior or a senior and you don't know whether you want to take it. I feel like it's better to take it than to not, just to have that score. It could be good for scholarships or applying to colleges, so that's all I have to say for that.
Yeah, just like Sukhina said, I think second semester is just really cruising by for a lot of us. We're starting to hear discussions about spring sports and prom, so I think everybody's really excited to see what the second half of the school year has in store for us. Snow week is starting next week at Monticello High School. We're going to kick it off this Thursday night with our annual snowball dance, which is from 8:30 to 11:00 PM at the Monticello High School. Our dress up days start next week. Monday is Valentine's Day, so we're going to wear red and pink to show love for one another. Tuesday is Character Day, we're going to dress up as our favorite fictional characters. Wednesday is Flannel versus Denim Day and we also have our medallion competition to find it around the school. Thursday is Space Cowboys and Friday is Magic Pride, so we're going to wear red and black. We've also had a lot of individual accomplishments in our athletic department. Nelson Anderson has 100 wins in wrestling. Quinn McCullough has 100 wins in wrestling. Carson Colas scores 1,000 points for boys basketball. Wilson Dahlheimer earns 100 points for boys hockey. Dakota Parker becomes the first diver to go over 300 points in dual meet. This record was set back in 1989 and he has now broken it twice, so that's a really cool achievement for him. Overall, it's a lot of positive energy from our students. Like we've seen great respect and competition in our student sections, but also on the court, the ice, the pool. It's just really great to see overall. And you can just tell that teams and students are really proud and really happy for the success that some of these individual athletes have accomplished in their own fields. A couple of weeks ago, we had a senior panel, about eight seniors go over to our middle school and talk to our eighth graders about coming into the high school next year. The eighth graders came up with a list of questions that they had for us seniors and it ranged from about, "What's your favorite school lunch?" to "What classes did I take next year?" So we had a lot of priorities to touch up on. Hanson and Coel came up with all 10 questions or so to talk to us seniors that we were going to go talk to them. So we touched up on things like, "What's your favorite school lunch?", "How to manage stress", and it was the scariest part of high school. I was one of the eight seniors to go and talk to these eighth graders and I just noticed a lot of respect from them. They sat very nicely and I didn't notice any side conversation or chatter. I think that goes to show a lot about the excitement that they have going into the high school, but also the respect that some of these seniors have earned and a lot about the leadership that we have here at the high school. Lastly, just a little touch up on Unified. I know I've talked about it before, but Unified is a group of kids with and without intellectual disabilities that come together, who participate in activities monthly. On March 2nd, we have a Spread the Word to End the Word campaign coming up, which is just a campaign that promotes inclusion and kindness around the school, so it's great to see students involved in that. And another thing that we're super excited about is we've had conversations started with admin about hopefully having a mobile polar plunge. We're hopeful to have Special Olympics come to our school and have a mobile polar plunge, which is just a huge tank full of freezing cold water and we're hoping to raise some money and get some teachers to jump. So we're super excited about that.
That is all we have to say for this evening. Again, Natalie and I really appreciate coming up here and kind of giving our voice to students and we hope that you have a wonderful evening. I'm starting to notice that warm weather is coming, so hopefully the groundhog doesn't predict six weeks of winter. But thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Oh, you do such a great job of covering all the things, like the academics and the fun stuff and the extra activities. You guys do such a great job.
Thank you so much, we really do appreciate that. We try our best.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a thank you to Superintendent Olson and Mr. Colwell and Ms. Hanson for the math clinics on Saturday that they touched on. I've heard through the grapevine that those are incredibly well attended, which is, if you think about high school students, teenagers getting up on a Saturday morning to go do math, somehow they've made this fun and I think that's really amazing and I want to thank you. And please pass along the thanks to the math teachers. I'm sure that coming in on a Saturday morning to do math, maybe they'd like a few more minutes in bed. It's wonderful and I was shocked at how well attended it is. So I just wanted to let people know that's not like six kids. It's, the media center's full, like there's no place to sit down. So I think that's fantastic, so thank you. Thank you for letting me have a...
I heard they said it was because of the donuts. I think they've said that a couple of years. Whatever it is. Thanks Kathy for that. All right, and then moving on, if I can have a motion for approving the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Melissa Curtis and second by Kathy Sebarth. Those for motion, aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes four zero. And then I believe we're down to Mr. Olson for the...
Yeah, so we have, so I have the acceptance of gifts, action item, and I will present one of these gifts. Program that we've had for a couple of years, the Monticello Fishing Team and Surf Pro of Wright County came forward with $1,000 to support the Monticello Fishing Team. So I bring that to you for normal acceptance.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donation from Surf Pro of Wright County, $1,000 for the Monticello Fishing Team.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made by Jennifer Lewis Cannigator, second by Kathy Sebarth. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. We're getting a little bit of feedback, so I'm just moving them all away. Moving down, innovation and leadership, so the budget assumptions with Tina.
Thank you, tonight we have approval for our budget assumptions for the 22-23 school year. Our first slide just has a snapshot of our budget timeline. So we're kind of in that pink area where we've done the financial forecast in January and now we're trying to solidify some things as we move towards June where we adopt the budget for the 22-23 school year. The assumptions are still pretty fluid. First, we have our enrollment assumption with the projection that was done in November. You want to go to the next slide Gavin? And then what we actually budget for. So we have the number of bodies in our building, but then what are the bodies that we actually get money for? Because about 100 kids within our district are really the special ed cooperative students where they get the money for those students. Next, we have our revenue assumptions, so they're still pretty generic where the state has already approved a 2% increase on next year's general education aid. So we're not assuming that we're getting any additional funding through this current legislative section, but it's still a possibility. Our state special education funding is still under the current funding laws and our special ed cooperative. Nobody's leaving, it's still Becker, Big Lake, Monticello as our cooperative. We're assuming reduced Title I funds and compensatory funds due to fewer families applying and being eligible for free and reduced meal benefits. And then the federal funds that are within the budget. So we've already spent round one of the ESSER money, so going into the next year, we'll still have possibly some round two ESSER money, round three and the governor's summer programming funds. On the expense side, we guess or annually estimate that we have three retirements within our general fund budget, but we do have more, so that helps. And that will have changes in our staffing based on the direction we had with the budget alignment plan. So that's still pretty fluid right now. Other expenditures, our salary and benefits will increase based on contract settlements and budget parameters set by the board. Our other expenditures will increase anywhere from 0% to 8%, depending on what it is. We won't borrow short term, so we still have a steady inflow of money from the state coming in. They haven't changed how they pay schools. So we're still fluid with our cash flow and that our total expenditures will be under budget about 0.5%. Other fund balance assumptions, we have our policy where we'll try to be within 8% to 16% of our expenditures. We have a committed severance fund balance that we spend down as we have retirements come in. And that we have our carryovers with our school buildings and departments on hold and evaluated each year. And the last couple of things for assumptions that will utilize our trust for our non-certified employee retirement insurance costs and that the board wants to do a two-year budget alignment plan for the 22-23 and 23-24 school year. So again, the assumptions are pretty generic, but at least gives us some guidelines on how to proceed moving forward with staffing. on how to proceed moving forward with staffing and supply budgets and programming. And, questions?
No questions. Seeking approval for the assumptions as presented by Tina.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, by Jennifer Lewis Canagator, second by Melissa Curtis. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for zero. Thanks, Tina. Next is Teaching and Learning, so the calendar with Mr. Olson.
I know that families and staff are getting excited to, you know, start thinking about next year and next year's calendars. So we have the 2223 calendar ready to hopefully be approved here tonight. That we, then we can get it out to our families so that they can start planning for the following year. One of the great things about our school district, I think, has been our school calendar. We've really tried give all of our education stakeholders a balance of what they need. And so we're trying to, well, three years ago, we put together a calendar committee of many educational stakeholders, family members, parents, you know, we had board members, union groups. And we really tried to look at the school calendar together. And really, this calendar, the 2223 calendar, is really a very similar calendar to what we worked on. And so what I'm trying to do in our district is to provide consistency. I know there are some European countries that they have the same calendar every year. You know what week is what week. And we think that's going to be really good for kids so that we get a sense of security for all of our people. They know what's coming, they know when it's coming. And so we're trying to strike that continued consistent balance in this calendar. So as you can see, it is very similar to the last two years. And if we get this calendar approved, I will give you a little foreshadowing that we will begin that next following year calendar right away so that we can get two years out there again. We have not heard any negative feedback over the last two years of living this calendar, except I would say, one of the things, one of the new goals that I had for this calendar was to give just a few more instructional days for our students. So that was a goal that I think we did achieve. And that, and so where that had to come from, one of the areas was we had four floating days to start the school year last year. And instead, we took one of those back and put it into the school year. That's, that's one of the differences, in order to gain a little bit of an instruction time. So really, when you look at the calendar, we look at some of those traditional holiday breaks as places to give families what they need, some of that family time. And then you give traditional grading periods, semester breaks. It's time for people to close the books on one semester and then really try, prepare and plan to give students the best for the next semester. So that's kind of what you're trying to do on the calendar. And then the other unique thing in a calendar is really trying to navigate the elementary versus secondary needs. They're very, very different. And that was one of the hardest things when we did get a large committee together, was, I guess it was good because people got to learn about each other, but really, you have very, very different needs. So instead of going to the committee in order to keep the consistency, we started with a calendar like last year. And then we went to all building leadership teams. And then obviously, we worked with admin first, and then went to all building leadership teams. And that information kept trickling back to us until we were able to get it to the spot where I think it's very similar to last year, but with just a couple of small little differences. Welcome back days, just so you know. Buildings are still working on their welcome back day. And I think to put it on this calendar right now, while they're still working, it really doesn't make sense. We know when they're going to be. They're gonna be in that range of time, August 29th through September 7th, depending on the building and the level of building. So we'll let them continue to do their work, and I'll make sure that that gets back to you so you can see the clear communication and welcome back days. But, you know, here's the school calendar, all the different colors. I know that Clay Sawatsky does a lot of the finishing and work and actually facilitated the calendar committee for much of it throughout the last month. And he said that we really don't have very many more colors we can add to the key. So, but those are the colored keys that we will use. The other difference, I guess, is you can see that we are trying another early dismissal on the 22nd of December. We haven't had that for a few years, but it is a day where kids are pretty excited for their break. And if we, with a later holiday there, with the 22nd being a Thursday, if we can give families a little to get on with some of their plans, I think families appreciate that, going back to the notes from the last time. And then the other thing that we're trying, secondary is in need of professional development time. And it's hard for our secondary administration to be able to find a good chunk of time with their teachers, with their staff, because of where they start and where they end the day. Elementary schools really get a traditional, almost a full hour in the morning. And secondary, just because of the nature of the school start times, secondary really only has about 15 minutes before kids start and about 25 after they leave for the eight-hour contracted time. So we're trying one new thing this year, and that's on January 3rd. We figured secondary might appreciate a slow start to the day after break, and they can sleep in a little bit, get started a little bit slower. And that'll give our secondary administration one additional time to really get going for the semester. That's just a week or two away after that point. And we'll try a late start in our community that's scheduled. Our transportation director is always a little leery on late starts. They're hard, they're taxing on the system when you have to call. But yet, we can do them. So it's always good to plan one and keep practice on them as well. So this will offer a couple there in this calendar. So, yeah, we just navigated very similarly to what the calendar was, with just a couple nuances.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Olson, can you clarify exactly how many academic contact days the students have?
How many they have in this one?
Yes, on this calendar.
On this one, they have 166 for elementary and 167 or eight, eight for secondary.
And that's more than we've had in past years, am I correct?
Yeah, it's three, three more than this year for secondary. It was hard, just, I think you guys probably all know, but 165 is the bare minimum, it's by state statute. And when you get really close to that 165, you have five snow days. We all remember the polar vortex year, which we had nine days where we had to do something. So we don't have those days in this calendar, so it's nice to get some scheduled days in there.
Thank you.
With the high school, oh, is that high school and middle school? Because with the busing, they ride together.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on the calendar? If not, seeking a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer Lewis Canagator, second by Kathy Zibar. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries for zero.
And we won't wait till Thursday, just so you know, to get this out to our families. We'll post it on the website and give them a little blurb tomorrow, so.
And then what other printed calendars available?
We don't do those till the summer.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Because I know people ask for those, really, they love the calendars. So then moving on, the Sapien Healthy Culture, Tina?
Capital Budget. So continuing on to that pink box in our budget timeline, just a first look at our capital budget request. So typically, on a given year, we have about a million in our capital budget revenue coming in to allocate towards needs. And the first 700,000, 600,000 goes to annual requests, like curriculum, technology, books in our media centers, helmets. And then we might want to consider placing a camera or security slot to that annual kind of staple, as we implemented a lot of cameras in our bond referendum in 2015. And a lot of those cameras that were installed are running to their end of life. And with supply budgets being what they are, or technology budgets, nobody has kind of the room to replace those on an annual basis. So we might want to look at putting something here for our capital budget. But we'll go into these requests deeper at our subcommittee meeting. But just quickly, some of the requests, and some came in late, some got missed on here. But, for example, Eastview, adding some classroom furniture to get that updated within their building, adding a couple new cafeteria tables. And then adding ramp, handicap accessible ramp by the canopy entrance so that there's a way for families to get in and out accessibly. At Pinewood, we have a kitchen office remodeled that needs to be under capital. The fridge and the freezer replacement can be under the food service fund, but the remodeling of the kitchen office has to be within our capital budget. So that's, that's a pretty price tag there. Classroom doors, this amount, just for 30 doors, and we'll probably just do 15 more, so cut that in half will be their request for next year. Looking to add a front office video system. Come into the front office, as it's kind of hard to see where the secretaries are placed and where the door is on letting people in. Playground equipment, adding some accessible equipment at the Pinewood site. Adding outside camera speaker, asking for classroom smart boards. I have to also meet with technology to see what their budget can handle and what their budget can't handle. We'll need to dive in deeper to the capital budget for classroom smart boards. So some buildings have additional technology needs. And then Door 9 at Pinewood, adding a fob. And then just recently today, looking to build a wall in one of their calming rooms to kind of separate that space and make it more safe for students in that. Little Mountain, we have another year of allocating towards a Safe Route grant. That was kind of the Monticello School District's commitment to that project. Replacing a sidewalk at Little Mountain that I think has a ice hazard, slip hazard that's kind of sunken and freezes over, and is a skating rink. Replacing it with a new sidewalk that's directly towards Cardinal Hills. Yes. And then looking at other replacement of the sidewalk by the bike rack. Other items at Little Mountain, plastic tables and carts, and additional classroom technology based on what the technology budget can handle. Middle School, looking at STEM cabinets and the auditorium projector. That's beyond its useful life. Looking at science labs with the water and gas valves that are in the classroom. Another water fountain remodel. And then again, some classroom technology needs, depending on the technology budget. High School, looking at another round of branding signage at the high school. More classroom furniture as we have another, you know, large classes coming into the high school and needs there. Looking possibly at coral risers, classroom technology, wood shop equipment, and then possibly lockers. You know, with additional students coming in, we might run out of locker space and not really a good spot to put additional lockers. So kind of looking at that at the moment. Activities, looking at volleyball standards, musical instruments, bands in, like, sauce bands in the stadium team rooms. So this is what I have right now. I know the needs are still coming in, but we'll dive in deeper and go over questions if I don't have answers today at our subcommittee. And then looking for approval at our March meeting.
Tina, just because I get to, you know, work with you on food service quite a bit, wondering if you could go all the way back to one of the first ones at Pinewood, as you were connecting the fridge and freezer, which we can take out of food service. And then is that connected to the office in any way, or is it separate?
The...
The kitchen office.
Right now, the kitchen office is in the kitchen, but it's freezer and the fridge being expanded to hold Pinewood food needs and nature-based needs. And then where the office is now is kind of the freezer space or the fridge space. And then the room next door will be the kitchen office space.
And then just so, like, you might not know, but I got to work at Pinewood. So that one, I wanted Tina to get us to start. And then I could share that, you know, really, Pinewood used to be the district freezer space for the whole district, because we had two kitchens. And even when we shut down both kitchens, we still had two freezers. And so we're lacking in freezer space for the district. And so this will be a way for us to be able to help the district so that you can maximize dollars as well. You know, getting your commodities, getting your supplies when you can. And with food shortages, that's important as well. So we see this as not only a Pinewood thing, but it's actually a district thing. I have some firsthand experience with it. So I thought I could get Tina started me on that. We could show how it's got a bigger vision to it.
It's not only that they need to be increased in size. They're getting to the end of their life, aren't they?
Correct.
All those are getting to be...
A lot of close calls, a lot of repairs.
We lose those resources, that's a lot of money. Any questions or anything for Tina? Thank you, Tina. And then COVID update?
Good evening. Did not change the date on the COVID update. It's my fault. Really quick update tonight. We obviously want to stay in front of you guys with COVID updates. We're trying to do them monthly, but we really don't have a lot of new information tonight other than to share that good news that our cases have gone down pretty dramatically over the last couple of weeks after we saw a pretty, pretty big spike in mid-January. As you can see, looking at our charts here, we've, we've really started to come back down rapidly, which of course mirrors what we're seeing kind of across the community in the state. So really, just wanted to get a chance to show you guys this tonight, that, you know, we had 23 student confirmed cases last week, which we'd had a couple of short weeks before that. So it was hard to, you know, say exactly how the data compared. But last week was a full five-day, was based on a full five-day student week. So it was good to see our case numbers stay down. And, you know, obviously, as we've learned by now, nothing is promised or guaranteed, but we're hopeful that they'll keep moving in that direction for the foreseeable future here. Do you guys have any questions about the COVID numbers or anything else related to COVID-19 right now? That's all. Yep, thank you.
That is the end of the agenda, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer Lewis Canagator, second by Melissa Curtis. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries for zero. And we, our meeting has ended at 6:35.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.